Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to this second session of the Planning Committee, taking place from the Walton Suites of Winchester Guildhall on Tuesday the 14th of December. Time is 2pm. My name is councillor Jen Ross, I'm the Vice Chair of Planning and I am chairing this meeting. I'm sure we'd all like to send our very best wishes for a swift recovery to councillor Theresa Evans, the Chair of Planning, who is currently indisposed. I need to remind you all that this meeting is being audio recorded and livestreamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Can I remind everybody, please, to switch off their mobile phones and any other electronic devices or ensure they're on silent? And we are operating in a Covid-secure environment and we will take five minutes between each item on the agenda to allow for cleaning and sanitisation. Right, so we are now at item number 11 on today's agenda, which is the King George V playing field at Bar End Road, Winchester. The officer presenting is Megan Osborne. If you'd like to give your presentation, please, Megan. Thank you. Can everyone hear me well?
The application site is located on the south-eastern side of Winchester City. The scheme forms part of the widest walleding facilities with university running tracks and astroturf turned to the west of the site and the new leisure centre beyond this, also to the west. To the south are the existing fields, King George V and the M3 east of the site. The application site forms the upper part of King George V's site and currently has two wooden pavilions on the site and some container units in the centre. The proposal is to demolish the existing pavilions and remove the shipping containers and replace with a large pavilion more centrally located within the site. The proposal is for 22 parking spaces, the original scheme had 23. The proposal is a two-storey building with footprints of 540 metres square proposed. The materials proposed are grey facing brick on the ground floor and vertical timber on the first floor. Also proposed is a green roof and grey aluminium windows and doors. This is the ground floor plan. This consists of three pairs of changing rooms with various facilities, changing facilities for match officials and disabled facilities. The first floor plans and the roof plan. The first floor plan proposes a clubhouse with toilets and kitchen facilities and a large balcony area with solar panels to one side. And the roof plan shows a ceiling green roof. Taking through some perspective shots of the posed pavilion. This is a view of the side coming back to the pavilion from the drive parking area. This is looking from the playing fields, looking north towards the posed pavilion. So you can see the materials, dark grey brick on the ground floor and the ceiling on the roof on the first floor. This is from higher up from a similar perspective. And again, from the other angle looking down towards the posed site. Takes me some photos to cover this today. In front of you there is the existing pavilion that's proposed to be demolished, just the first pavilion on the site we've come to. And on the left is the parking as existing. And on the right are playing fields. Again, starting in the playing field, looking towards the existing pavilion. Again, the same pavilion standing within the playing fields, looking straight on into the back. And the proposed pavilion would be to the right of this. This looking out over the playing fields and you can see the container units in the distance essentially and then the further on pavilion, the second pavilion further on towards the end of the site there. Well, the proposal is considered acceptable and is in accordance with the November Plan Policy and would be a one and update to the existing facilities on the site. Therefore, the proposal is recommended for approval subject to conditions as outlined in my report and the change to the wording in condition 11 in the update sheet. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you very much. Okay, we now go to the public participation. We have first our objecter Janet Berry from the Highcliff Community Forum for Action. Nice to see you here, Janet. You have three minutes. It can be shown on the clock. You know how to switch on the microphone when you're ready. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Highcliff Community Forum for Action is responsible for implementing the Highcliff Community Plan, which includes KGB. It was produced with assistance from the city council. While improvements to facilities at KGB are very welcome, there are some concerns about this planning application, which it is hoped can be addressed. The highest priority in the community plan is to investigate ways to make children feel safer in Highcliff, including road safety. It reflects a longstanding aspiration for Highcliff to be a child-friendly neighbourhood, seen for example in Highcliff being the first area in Hampshire to have a street closed for the playing out scheme. KGB is the main green space in Highcliff, but the council's consultation on KGB in 2018 highlighted local residents' concern about the safety of children and other pedestrians accessing KGB through the main entrance from Milland Road to the play area. Please consider the following, and particularly in relation to policy DM18 on access and parking: limiting car numbers to the parking spaces provided, noting there will soon be over 1300 other council parking spaces in Bar End; removing the green waste depot; a travel plan for KGB users which promotes the accepted priority for walking, cycling and public transport; a transport management plan to deal with large events, any additional safety measures; it is welcome that community groups may be able to hire the club room. In the February 2021 consultation, the club room was on the ground floor. In these plans, it is now upstairs. Can consideration be given to a community hiring area with refreshment and storage space on the ground floor, as this would make it easier to hold activities that could integrate the outside and inside? The 2021 consultation showed support for an enhanced park around the perimeter of the park with wild flower planting and benches. This would improve a long-established walkway used by many local residents. It ties in with a key issue in the Bar End design framework of meeting the needs of local people to create a fully inclusive recreational environment for all, but it is not on the proposed site plan with this altered pitch layout. It is reassuring that there is now an ecology report together with recommended specific conditions. However, could it be clarified as to whether the planting provision in condition 10 includes protection and enhancement of existing hedgerows such as along the access road car parking area? Please review these plans with the local community in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Janet. Do members have any questions or clarification necessary? No? Okay, thank you very much. We now move on to the supporter, who is councillor Anne Weir. I believe there's Graham Todd as well? Yes. Councillor Weir, will you be speaking? And Mr Todd is here for questions afterwards. Lovely. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Speaking on behalf of Winchester Town Forum, sponsor of this proposed facility, the two pavilions at KGB are in poor condition, having exceeded their intended useful life and have been due for replacement for nearly a decade. This work was put on hold during the process of deciding how River Park Leisure Centre would be replaced. As the Winchester Sport and Measure Park Plans evolved, it became a condition of that development which removes pitches used by the girls' league at the Garrison Ground that the KGB pitches should be upgraded to accommodate a higher level of use. In turn, the requirements for new pavilion facilities at KGB had to be revisited. Since 2018, a programme of public consultations has been ongoing around the development of the amenities of facilities at the KGB playing fields and these procedures have been positive feedback. The city council and town forum have listened to local residents and key stakeholders, including allotment holders, sports clubs and park users, to understand how best to meet the diverse needs and aspirations of these key groups. KGB is also governed by Fields in Trust, which places further constraints on the use of the open space land and on the footprint of any buildings. Informed by our engagement with a wide range of communities and interests, this application is one part of the extensive upgrading of the park area, including rebuilding the popular skate park, opening up access for walkers, cyclists and casual users, extensive landscaping and rewilding where possible and refurbishment of other play areas. The proposed pavilion is fit for 21st century use, a resilient, understated design which blends in well, setting on the boundary between the city and the national park, providing amenities for sports teams, community groups and the private social users. The high-quality building will be efficient, sustainable, secure and in keeping with the new leisure centre. Associated access and parking improvements will make the area safer for all users. This balances physical constraints, the expectations of different users and delivers within budget. A key group who will benefit from this new pavilion are the Winchester City Flyers, who have 23 teams playing in the Hampshire Girls' Youth Football League. I have a testimonial from them about the importance of this facility. I commend the officer's report and urge you to endorse their recommendation to approve this vital application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Weir. Members, do you have any questions or clarification? Councillor Bentay.
Thank you very much. The presentation from the Highcliff Community Forum seemed to imply that some of their suggestions had been taken up. I'm sure these must have been considered. Is there good reason for some of their suggestions have been turned down? Particularly the one mentioned of the placing of the inner room upstairs rather than downstairs?
We've looked very closely, we've met with the Highcliff Forum on site. As I mentioned in my introduction, one of the challenges we have is the footprint of the building, which is constrained by the Fields in Trust covenant on the area. And so for this particular facility, we were constrained in where we could put that extra space, that community space. So it has lived access to the first floor and is, I think, evidently usable by community groups, but this isn't the only place, it's like where we're looking at community facilities for the Highcliff Forum.
Thank you. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. A question that comes very readily to mind is, who is actually going to manage this building? The fact that when we read the application, it didn't actually state a club room. Who is actually going to run, be responsible for the management of it?
My understanding at the moment is that it would be run on behalf of the city council by the state management team, but Mr Todd may be able to add something to that.
Yes, that's correct. So that'll be managed by our landscape team, bookings will be done through them, much like it is at the back.
So if I may, Chair, would that mean that there will be a member of staff on duty every time it's open?
No, much the same way as at the moment, if we opened up and locked up after issues.
Okay.
Sorry, yes, Chair, I'll bring that later on.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Evans.
Thank you, councillor Weir. I'd like to ask about parking. My impression is that the current limited number of parking spaces are often exceeded by there are lots of matches and activities. And yet, it is claimed that the new arrangements will provide sufficient parking provision. I suppose I'm concerned that there will be overspill parking that will be damaging to the site and potentially dangerous. You talked about associated parking management arrangements and I wonder if you could just say a little bit more about how the expected increased number, I think you referred to higher level of use of the pitches, how is the increased number of people coming going to be managed?
I'll keep up on this. I don't think there's going to be a significant change in numbers, that change has already happened since we absorbed the extra demand into the KGB and the Garrison Ground, which I suspect is what has resulted in the increased pressure on the parking area. I think the parking spaces will be better defined and we will be blocking off the road beyond the pavilion. There will be bullets that will be put in with the refurbishments of the whole area, which will restrict access beyond the pavilion. But obviously, there have been requirements on clubs to manage the access and the parking on the busy times. Clearly, that conversation is continuing with those clubs to ensure that they adhere to the requirements, which I think has very pointed out earlier. There is plenty of other parking now within close vicinity. We have a new car park coming upstream as well at Bar End. So there should be, you know, plenty of opportunity for parking within the vicinity that is safer. But I don't know if Mr Todd has got anything to add there?
Yes, thank you. Just to add, so clubs would be encouraged to use the park in my facilities and in addition, as part of the future park, and also we'll be looking at pedestrian access through that front entrance as well, as I understand there's been concerns raised about that.
Thank you. Any more questions, members? No? Thank you very much indeed for your contribution. Okay. Megan, did you want to add anything to what you already said? No? So, members, we will move to general questions on the officer's report. I'll take questions on any element of it. Thank you, councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. As I said in the question, I was not fully aware, because I expected it to be inspired, that there was a club room here. There appears to be now hours of operation being identified. If there's a club room, does this mean it's going to be let out to a private party at any time? Is it to be licensed at any stage in time? Basically, things like, if you've got 64, sorry, 68 covers to identify, 52 of which are indoors, what is the situation in regard to those sort of requirements or requests that come forward?
Thank you, councillor Reed. Ms Osborne.
You're correct, there are no hours of operation conditions proposed. The licensing, they would have to get separate licence from the licensing authorities to use it, sell for a bar. In terms of the opening hours, I don't know how they intend to use that. I suppose that would be something that the public would...
Chair, I think my thinking was, there's already a, there's already a use here that doesn't have any hour of restriction. Given that we've heard about how the proposal is to be managed and let and managed, you know, the activities needing to be managed through licensing, I don't think it's necessary for us to double up on that from a planning perspective, but obviously that's a different thing for today and maybe finish public speaking, but if you did want to go back to the application to clarify that point, that might be beneficial, Chair.
Mr Todd, were you able to clarify that point? Thank you.
The operating hours will be varied depending on the season, obviously. Some months it might well be up to 10 o'clock at night.
And there is no licence and any private function requiring a licence would have to apply for one?
Yes, by this stage, so I understand.
Okay, but is it going to be available for private parties and community acts through community groups and stuff?
Yes, it will be made available for kids, yes.
Good, thank you. I think that's answered that question. Did you have a follow-up, councillor Reed?
No, Chair, because my colleague has already brought up part of that parking. That will obviously be more of a problem because of the years.
Thank you. Okay, parking has been covered. Right. Any more questions on the report, members? Councillor Evans.
I suspect, Chair, this is a question that will simply reveal my own ignorance, but it goes anyway. I'm very pleased to see that the building is likely to achieve a brilliant, excellent rating and references made to CP11. My reading of CP11 is that we should be aiming for outstanding. And if that is correct, I'm wondering what factors about this project or this site have meant that that couldn't be achieved with this proposal?
Yes, CP11 does. That's what asked for outstanding, where it states where possible and if there's any reasonable reasons why you can't make that statement, you know, if you look for excellence, therefore go on from there. In this instance, it's down to mainly, I believe, the location of the proposal and that's why it is the outstanding credentials for bringing it to the table.
Thank you, Megan. Councillor Reed.
Sorry, Chair, I didn't mean to put it in before. The toilet facilities on the building, they appear, from what I can gather, to be opened up to the outside. So presumably people will be getting access to the toilets from the outside during the course of the day, when possibly the building is southwinding a lot. Is that right? And if so, there seem to be very few toilets for the amount of field it is covering.
I don't know the maintenance of the building proposed inside out, but I assume that they would be locked when the building needs to be used.
So anybody needing to decide one type of facility?
The building will be used when they, I don't know, and I hope you...
Okay, I think we can go again to Mr Todd for some clarification here. Mr Todd, are these public toilets that are open generally during the day or not?
No, they'll only be made available when the building is in operation.
Right, that's clear, that one, I think. Okay, any more questions, members? Councillor Pearce.
Thank you, Chair. I'm delighted, Graham and councillor Weir, to see this application coming forward. I know that it has been debated for long years by the community and the city council. One time, three, four years ago, I was part of those community consultations and I know it's part of the promise, as you quite rightly said, councillor Weir, that to the Winchester Flyers, they not only want to save this, and maybe sexist when I'm saying this, but it's a reality, we're surprised at the only large female football soccer team in Winchester. And I think it will be a valuable jewel, they would be the primary users, clearly, but because they've got so many members, but not the only users, used by any means. I know with the, what you said earlier on about the pitches that have gone, basically with the new leisure centre car park, promised that those pitches will be replaced by reorganising the KGB site, which is identified in the pictures that we've just seen. Clearly, all the changing facilities are going to be downstairs because it is primarily a sporting facility and that is where you would expect them to be. Like any sports facility, when you're talking about adult club or number of other clubs, it's going to require licensing if they're going to sell outdoor. That's not unusual, that is perfectly normal in these facilities. To have a service like this on the top floor, yes, there'll have to be disabled access, of course there will be, it'll be quite visible in the detail plans, but it's a means of raising money to run this facility. It's not going to be cheap to run and our estates team basically has got to make it actually financially viable, not only because it's part of our estates, but as a facility for primarily the youngsters and the youth of this I'm talking about in Winchester, urban community primarily, but also the district generally. Because, you know, there isn't, there isn't a sports team that's compatible with quite a few models of Winchester farmers. One time they used to have a couple of ex-national players, I think in their first team, as I recall rightly, and I do know that Mick Shannon's granddaughter was on time a captain there. So I welcome this facility, a little start when I saw some of the pictures that you saw there. But the problem is this architectural drawing, which will be seen against the background of the rising land in behind, and it's a very stark feature. So the landscape has been part of it and that gives you a wrong impression. But I'm going to say I welcome this, thank you for the report and thank you for yourself and Weir for putting the case. I'm sorry, Janet, but I understand what you're saying, a pressure group, but let's be honest, your pressure group has been listened to, because I've been at meetings where you've been present and you've been listening. So they have been taken, clearly not every detail, because there are all sorts of people that influence this. You're not getting anything, you're getting something, and that is a primary sports facility, which is on your doorstep. So thank you very much, Graham. Thank you very much, councillor Weir, for helping this make, thank you for doing the call.
Thank you, councillor Pearce. Any more contributions to debate, members?
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Reid.
I too welcome the application from two currently structures which have lived their life and need to be replaced. So this is a wonderful way of doing it. My only concern is, and I say this from a practical point of view, is the club facility that may cause a few headaches, let alone problems. But also, what I had in my particular patch, and we did a similar building, is the fact the call for local conveniences on the site for when the site's being used as a kick-around by children, they want to go, they need somewhere to go, and with the external doors there, I naturally thought that these would be open to allow such things to take place. However, that might prove to be a little difficult because if children can't find that type of space to go with their toilets, then they have to run on the way home, hoping they make it. But yes, I welcome the application, I think it's a good application in general, but just a little bit concerned about the management problems that may well occur in the future from my experience.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Any further contributions to debate? No? I'd just like to say actually that this has come to planning committee not because it had more than six objections, because it didn't, but because it's a city council, effectively a city council application, you only need one objection to trigger it coming to committee, which is why it's here, just in case anybody wondered. And I also want to say, thank you councillor Janet Berry for coming along and pointing out those issues that you are concerned about, and I know that councillor Weir will have been listening very carefully, and I know that there's an awful lot more than just this replacement pavilion going on at these playing fields. And I'm sure that a lot of those issues that you raised, like the safety of children and so on, will be uppermost in their minds when looking at those, the access to the parking and so on. So thank you for raising those issues today. Okay, if there's no more contributions, this application has been recommended for approval. So can I see all those members in favour, please?
That's nine unanimous, Chair.
That's all members, that is approved. That's all members. That is approved. Thank you very much indeed. We'll have a five minute break once we sanitize everything before the next item. Thank you. Okay, I think we're all back now. We're ready to resume. Okay, we're now on to item number twelve on our agenda, which is Peterson's College, Owens Road, Winchester. And before we start, councillor Edwards, um, wanted to just make a swift declaration. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman, Chair. For the avoidance of any doubt, I just wish to declare non prejudicial, non clear of our interest. As a governor of Peterson's College until October this year, I was involved in the college's strategic planning. But I have had no involvement in the development of this particular proposal. I have no current relationship with the college. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Edwards. Uh, the officer presenting is Megan Morse-Ball. Hello again, Megan. And, um, if you'd like to give us your presentation, I know already.
Thank you. Peterson's College is located relatively centrally to just near the train station. It is a large campus that is spread over a number of sites. The main campus is to the north of Hattley Road and to the St Clairoue Road, and to the east of Andover Road and the west of Stockbridge Road. The main buildings of the college are located on the northern part of the site with the larger area of open space that spans from east to west across the middle of the site. This is designated in the legal plan as open space land. That's the dark green. The site of this application is located to the southern boundary of the campus, to the north of the existing houses on Hattley and Cranworth Road. To the east of the site, there are existing tennis courts. So, sorry, to the west, there's a paved area. There is an existing building on the site, which was previously used as the changing rooms for the swimming pool that was located to the south of the building. There's vegetation along the southern boundary with Hattley Road. The proposal is for the demolition of the existing changing rooms and the erection of two storey classroom block containing twelve classrooms and associated facilities. There was planning permission previously given for a building on this site. This was larger and is shown on, on this plan. Um, it's the red dotted line. Just take you through the proposed ground floor plan. So we've got six classrooms here. And then, uh, toilets and facilities. And the entrance on the northern side of the building away from the house is on Hattley Road. And this is the first floor plan. This is, uh, the six classrooms again. Apart from the other ones, and then toilets up to the north. Let me take you through some elevations. Um, the proposal is for red brick mainly, or the flat roof. And this is, the top of your screen is the, um, elevation you can see from Hattley Road, looking up towards the main building in the campus beyond. This shows a section across the plan, the site, showing Cranworth Road, number twenty seven, to the left of the screen. Then Hattley Road, and then there's trees along the boundary, and then the proposed building. And the red dotted line is the application that was previously permitted on the site. There's twenty eight metres approximately from the edge of the proposed building to the edge of the dwelling from Cranworth Road. This is a view, perspective view, um, standing within Peterson's College, the tarmac area that I mentioned earlier, and the building here. And to the right is, uh, trees, and you can just see the roof of that dwelling on Cranworth Road. This is looking up towards the main campus, the main building, straight country here, and the proposed building to the left, and it's standing in the tennis courts. And this is looking from within the site again, looking down towards, um, Hattley Road beyond from the proposed building here, and the trees beyond. Um, to the left of your screen is perspective view for the proposed building, standing, um, within the campus, looking towards Hattley Road. And this is existing, so they are removing these, um, cycle storage, and they are putting them elsewhere on, on the campus. And this is the proposed building, um, the changing rooms. This is the previously permitted building that was permitted on the site, in the, in the, in the virtually same place of this proposal. And this is standing in Hattley Road, approximately where the house is, which is in the corner of Cranworth Road. Um, with the proposed building here behind the tree belt and looking at the campus, the main campus building there beyond. And then to the top left of your screen, you've got the existing view, looking from Cranworth Road, the trees beyond. And this is perspective view of a glimpse of the building there. And again, on the right hand side, uh, looking along Hattley Road in the other direction. Um, with the tree belt here and the building, you can't, you can see it in the, in the respective shot here. And this is, um, another perspective shot from, um, the first wall window in the corner of Cranworth Road and Hattley Road. And it's building behind the vegetation and the tree belts. This is a photo, a photo that I took, um, standing within the site where the existing swimming pool was, looking at the dwelling number twenty seven of Cranworth Road. And this is the other house in the corner of Cranworth Road and Hattley Road as well, with the tree belts here. The proposed building is, is going to be stepped back from the boundary here. And this is the existing, uh, changing room facilities, again, with Cranworth Road running on your right. So this is a photo I took from the dwelling number twenty seven of Cranworth Road, looking towards the existing facility, changing room facilities here. Um, and the camp main campus building and the proposed building, showing, um, on the left hand side of the screen. This application for a new building will provide twelve classrooms, and it's considered acceptable and in line with relevant planning policy. Therefore, it's recommended for approval subject to conditions as set out in my report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Megan. Okay, we now move to public participation. We have one objecter, Martin Ryland. Um, if, if you, do you know how to switch on your microphone? Just press the button at the bottom and the red lights will come on. And there's a clock there which will show you your three minutes counting down. Um, if you'd like to start when you're ready, the clock will start then. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to express the objections which I share with my immediate neighbours at the top of Cranworth Road. Um, to the new proposal. Many objections we, um, we have to this and the previous proposal for the same site concern the size, the setting, and the impact the new block would have on us and the surrounding area. Our underlying conviction is that the new development is in the wrong place. This site sits within the protected green lawn to the south of the main college buildings. We believe a sustainable solution would be to reuse, refurbish and extend those buildings which have already been identified as unfit for purpose. This requires a master plan for the college site, which addresses the bigger issues of land usage and traffic flow. Policy DM fourteen sets out that in the interest of sustainable development and in order to secure long term benefits. When proposals come forward on sites occupied by major landowners. A long term master plan for the site should be sought to ensure wider benefits can be achieved. When this planning was submitted for an art facility in November two thousand and seventeen. This committee chose to ask for a master plan for the college site prior to any further application. I want to briefly consider some points made by your planning officers in the draft report on the new proposals. The officers say there is an agreed master plan which dates from two thousand. However, this is now outdated. A draft replacement master plan for this site has been submitted within the past few months. And being considered separately by officers. In view of the compliance with the emerging master plan. It is not considered reasonable to delay a decision of this application until the master plan can be finalised and agreed. This cannot be right. The new draft emerging master plan is not a public document. It is not available, let alone discussed with those it will affect nor considered fully by this, by the council planners. And surely cannot be part of this process. Lastly, as if in irony, the report repeats what was said in two thousand and seventeen. That the master plan should be pursued as a matter of urgency prior to further, you know, lots of coverage.
Mr Ryland, I'm afraid you've run out of your three minutes, but members do have an opportunity to ask you for questions of clarification, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, members, do we have any questions of clarification for Mr Ryland? Okay, I think, I think you got your message across, Mr Ryland. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. Okay, we now move on to the supporter. Well, we have three simple signs to stand, a team from Peterson's College. Is one of you going to speak? And then the others be available to answer questions?
Sorry about that, Chair. Um, yes, there's two of us that would like to speak, if that's possible, when we're sharing our three minutes.
Okay, lovely. So if you'd like to introduce yourselves and then sharing all three minutes, um, we will start the clock after the introductions. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Madam Chairman, members. Uh, my name is David Jobins, acting for the college, and I'm a planning consultant. Um, and you're going to hear in a moment from David Cartrice, uh, from the college itself. Um, firstly, I thank you for allowing us to address you today, and also for your office airing a very thorough and very well balanced report. I think it's fair to say we work very closely with your planning department, both at pre-application stage and at application stage. And I'm pleased to see that there are no objections to the proposals from highways, drainage, trees, ecology, your environmental health officers, or any other technical consultees. Proposals are indeed supported at every level in planning policy. And to quote the report before you, page one five four. The building proposed is related to the function of the college as an educational institution, and in this instance, providing much needed classrooms. Your attention, development of facilities and services is encouraged by policy CP six. Furthermore, these much needed classrooms are wholly in accordance with the NPPF, which places great weight on the improvement of existing educational facilities. And they're something which are welcomed as an important and valued asset, bringing significant investment to the city. I think it's important to say the college do have the funds available to take this forward now. Um, the building, as you've heard, is sited twenty eight to twenty nine metres away from nearest residential property and largely screened by mature landscape. There is no harmful impact on the area or the amenity of residents. Whilst we respect the right of residents to object, it is correct to say a master plan has been shared with your planning officers and reached general agreement consensus. Um, I think the early master plans showed the current site as being a plausible location for this building. Because the remainder of the site is largely open space protected, quite rightly so. Uh, we are meeting Briam in terms of sustainability, Briam Excellence. We have a solar array and other sustainable measures are proposed, such as a travel plan, car sharing, excellence, insulation and building fabric for the building. Um, the site, as you've heard, has recently had planning consent for a larger building, and we hope you will support this application and recommend it to you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Dave Carter, Vice Principal of the college. At Peterson's College, we take great pride in the achievements of our students, the quality of our provision and the teaching and learning environment that we provide. Some of our current accommodation is not well suited to flexible use and risks limiting classroom activities. The key aim of the proposed building is to improve the quality of our classroom stock. We've carefully considered the need for a new building and have, in the last few years, refurbished and converted a number of spaces in existing buildings. But we do now fear that we've exhausted these options. The proposed building differs from the previous successful application as we feel that the provision of general purpose classrooms rather than specialist art studios provides us with greater flexibility. This more modest proposal has enabled us to secure the funds we need to construct the building. We have not yet determined which curriculum areas will occupy the new building, but our priority will be to relocate those areas in the greatest need of improved accommodation.
but our priority will be to relocate those areas in the greatest need of improved accommodation and those where classroom size imposes constraints on the styles of teaching and learning we can deploy. In recent years, growth in some curriculum areas has led to the dispersal of some subject departments around the campus.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's the end of your time. If you could switch off your microphone just a bit, please. Thank you very much. So, members, do we have any questions of clarification for the team from Peter Simmons? Oh, councillor Peterson, thank you.
I don't know who's going to answer this one. Perhaps it's going to be David Jobins, actually at the age, or maybe the vice principal is sitting there. It's about this master plan. Quite clearly, at least one group within the neighbourhood is concerned about this master plan. The report mentioned the master plan on page 155 as emerging. Is this facility actually part of that master plan or is this something you put in before the master plan is finalised?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The master plan, as I say, there was an earlier master plan. And of course, the site is heavily constrained by the open space which we are respecting. The new master plan, which we discussed with your planning officers, has received general support, I think it's fair to say, and I'm sure Megan will correct me if that isn't the case. So we're currently finalising it before we go out for further consultation. But I think it's fair to say that in either scenario, the options are limited unless you want us to encroach into the open space, which we have no wish to do. So that's, that's where we are. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, you didn't answer my question. Is this application part of the master plan or is this something you want to get through before the master plan is passed?
Well, sorry, I'll answer the question later. We'd like this application determined today because it's very important for the college. As I say, the funds are there, ready to go. The master plan does show this site as being suitable for development. I think it's fair to say the previous master did as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any further questions of clarification, members? No? Thank you very much indeed for coming along today. Okay. We don't have any other speakers, so back to Megan. Do you have anything to add to what you've said, Sir Paul? No? Okay, members, we'll have questions on the whole report, please. So questions to the officer, councillor Reed.
Chair, when we've heard from the officers in the report that the solar pods are going to be removed and put elsewhere on the site. Do we know where they are and do Hampshire County councillors are well aware of it? Because that will alter the determination of road use in other locations.
I think that would be a question for the applicant to go back to where they're going to be located. But I've been told that they will be eradicated elsewhere on the campus. If we can go back to them to clarify where. Is that personal?
Of course, Madam Chairman. Yes, we are showing on our proposed site layout the relocated cycle pods. And that to the, to the north, well, they're close to the existing buildings at the north, if that makes sense, sorry. So we are replacing them. They are shown on the drawings. Thank you.
Well, Hampshire County councillor, where of this particular move? Because obviously it will alter the traffic determination in a long part of the city.
Can I ask how many cycle spaces there are in those parking pods?
I can't, sorry, Madam Chairman, I can't give the exact figure. I mean, we are placing on a like-for-like basis, so there's no loss of cycle storage. My understanding is the Hampshire County councillor raised no objections to the application include, which includes the relocation cycle.
And that, that is on the plans on the, on the website, isn't it?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
It's on the website. That's great. Thank you. Any other questions? Questions for Megan? On the whole report? No? Okay, debate. Councillor Pearce.
It's a difficult one. I understand the community's point of view. Development on site for Peter Simmons has been just at one point for many, long years, particularly when it comes to parking in the local, in the local streets. But this is not part of this particular application. In my life, I was involved in education. I understand exactly what you're saying, Vice Principal, about the need for flexibility in the design of your teaching classrooms. A little surprise, I could have a paragraph about noise. Noise is something I associate with secondary school level, not the tertiary level. Certainly, every time I've been on this site, noise has never been an issue. Shall we say they're, they're rotten stack or whatever, it is much more effective at that age than it is here. 4,000 plus students, you need a constant evolution of buildings. It is, in my view, a modern version of some of the old new buildings behind the original site. Inevitable transition in architectural terms in my mind. I like what you're doing. I understand fully exactly your need, but of course, that's not a planning policy. I'm a little concerned on behalf of the objectors about this mysterious master plan. It's not something that we, because it's not the education committee that deals with. I'm not quite sure if education committee deals at tertiary level. Anyway, that's a rhetorical question. It's, so I'm looking at, almost a bit when I looked at the pictures, I looked at first, I thought, hang on, what are these big stars doing here? Then I realised there were cycle storage sheds. Surely could have better job of designing those. Maybe your students could actually do something for you on that. It doesn't help to address the parking issue in the area. And as it's the evolution of existing classrooms, which I fully understand, any, any institution, what it, 4,000, four and a half thousand students are there, have you there now? It's, it's going to need that. You have to need that to keep Peter Simmons at the level it is. It's a nationally recognised institution. I'm very, very good one in my, in my viewpoint. I know we were always delighted when we had students grade at Peter Simmons in a competition with the other place down in Eastleigh, just over at Peter Simmons. But so, no, I, I can't see any reason why we should turn this down. I understand exactly what the objection about parking. It's not about parking, this application, I dare say. Master plan, I'm a bit concerned about. Megan, I might just give you a bit of credit about that issue when I push your answer. But anyway. I like it. It's, I've got to say, I apologize for this with local residents. I understand what you're thinking. But I don't think your fears are going to be as bad as you, you think they are.
Thank you, councillor Pearce. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's not, that's not allowed. Okay. Any more to debate? Councillor Reed, thank you.
Yes, Chair, I think this is an application, having visited the site on previous occasions for other planning applications. It is a logical move for what has been happening. And looking at the photographs that have been presented to get a, an idea of what the visibility of the building is going to be is, is quite interesting. The cycles, the last time I was there, there were quite a lot of cycles. There was no pods in those days. It was just open parking and there did seem to be a very large area of open parked bicycles. And that was my question as to where these bicycles were going to gain onto the site after this particular application possibly has been passed. I can see no planning reasons for refusing the application.
Thank you, councillor Reed. I think, I think with the existing previous permitted building on the site and this being actually slightly smaller and further set back from Happley Road, hopefully a lot of the concerns expressed by local residents will, will, will be addressed. That's it, I hope. But in terms of planning, I think we'd be on a hiding to nothing if we tried to turn this one down. Okay, any other contributions? Yes, councillor?
Thank you, Chair. As a local ward councillor here, I obviously know the area very well. I have sympathy with the residents in terms of the local, the master plan not being in place. When you look at the diagram of the, the area and the current buildings on the site, they are all to the other side away from the houses. And this is the first, as I can see, there's major development on that side of the campus. And for it not to be in the master plan and that master plan being signed off and agreed and consulted with by the residents as well as the planning offices in the council, I think is, is a mistake that a master plan should have been agreed prior to this planning application being put forwards. On the other hand, I know the road very well. I walk past it on a daily basis. I've seen the pictures and the scheme there. And so I do feel that it will possibly fit. But I go back to saying, I think it's been done in the wrong order. I can't see any planning reason why I can turn it down at this stage. There was a previous agreed plan, place. So reluctantly, I will have to support this. But as you make my voice clear, the going forwards sends me to understand that they need to work in conjunction with the local area. Have that master plan in place, have that agreed with the local people. And then things may lead forwards a bit smoother future.
That was said in 2017. Exactly what you wanted.
Yes, I think we are reiterating that. I think, I think that message has got through clear and loud to the college. They're nodding behind you, so. Thank you very much indeed, everybody. Any more contributions to debate? No? Okay, this application is recommended for approval. So can I see all those members in favour, please? That's nine, you know, Miss Chair. So that application is approved. And we've got two, no, just one more item on agenda. So I think we'll just have a five-minute break to allow sanitisation and then. Welcome back, everybody. We're now ready for item number 13 on our agendas, which is the application at 101 Grange Park, Norrington. And our officer presenting is Sean Bigley. Welcome, Sean. If you'd like to get into your presentation.
So we've got a site just south of Norrington, a village without a different boundary. The application is for a, a new access for agricultural field. It's currently accessed from the property which is associated with, given the address of 101 Grange Park, Norrington. There's the, the area in question showing the site of the proposed access. I should say here, Chair, that the the way the graphics have been done, it makes the access look much larger than it is. And we'll, we'll turn to this in a minute. It's actually quite a modest access, six metres setback from the road and four metres wide. If you'd measured that, it would be greatly in excess of that, so it's a little misleading. So apologies for that. There is a more detailed plan. There's a more detailed plan, showing the sightlines and the depth of the access and the planning on the right, going in measurements, as I said, six metres back from the road, four metres wide, and that's the area to be hard surface, to be concrete, and the provision of the new access gate to the field. There's detail of the construction of the gate and the fence either side. It's not specified whether it'll be timber or metal, but in planning policy terms, either are acceptable. Just taking through the front chart, looking south, three oh four six, way down, in the face of the area, which is his own. And the same view from the other side, looking north. Rightly opposite, the proposed access, and again, as we saw where the access would go. And then a couple of shots from that inside field, and youth found there within that field, which is just proposed to the distinctive access team.
Thank you very much. Councillor Reed.
Before we move on, can I draw your attention to page 209, which shows a different location for the entrance?
Two.
Yeah. It's either thirty three thousand from the other gates, which is correct.
It's the satellite image of the application site.
So that one we could on.
The last one, that one there.
I think what Sean's trying to pick up is that the satellite image, on the earlier plans of cross hatching, is something we do in the office to try and identify on our G I S system. And obviously, the scale of that's a little bit ironic, it's been plotted. So the plan that Sean could move to on your presentation, which is the, you can just look at it now, go back Sean. That one chair, to the left, you can just about see where the entrance is proposed with sightlines in red, and that's the proposal in front of you chair, so that's the location.
Okay, so those red lines on page 209 are completely wrong, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we have two public speakers. We have councillor Margot Power, board councillor, welcome councillor Power. And Dr Masca, who's the agent, is that right? Yes. So we'll start with councillor Power, you have five minutes. Clock will start when you start speaking, you know how to operate the microphone, thank you very much.
Thank you chairman. If members were wondering about numbering system and how to find houses on the Grange estate, they were numbered in the sequence in which they were built. It does make my interest. My concerns about this new access have always been centered on road safety. This is a rural road, but as you all know, we do bat along there. Now, agricultural use of this access is fine. The condition as we have recommended at the moment does not restrict the use to agricultural vehicles. Agricultural vehicles have height usually, although they can be a bit slow when accelerating onto the main road. So that's a worry, because we do move along there quite quickly. My main concern however, is that the sightlines to the north, this entrance actually is right on the boundary of the neighbour's property. So the sightline to the north being kept clear of vegetation to a height of point six metres relies on maintenance of that neighbour's land. I am concerned that that will not be maintained. I do not understand how it will be enforced. And I'm asking, I think, for clarity on how that sightline will be maintained and reassurance that we will be enforcing the use by agricultural vehicles only under conditions that effect. That is not how condition files express at the moment. Thank you chairman.
Thank you for that succinct contribution councillor Power. Okay, members, do we have any questions of clarification for councillor Power? No? Good. Perhaps Mr Masca will be able to answer these questions that were raised by councillor Power. You have three minutes, and the clock is over there, and we'll count down as soon as you start speaking. You will operate the microphone, you know how to operate it. Thank you very much, when you're ready.
Thank you chair. Thank you committee members for hearing us today. The planning officer has given a report on the recommendation for approval, and the case officer has given a very thorough summary in the papers you have today. This proposal is for a simple and unnecessary access to an agricultural field. To be clear, this is an agricultural field in the countryside and classed as such. There are no, there are no other, there are other such accesses as well, the B three oh four six, that's so the other fields, not to mention the drives to, as one of them, Swartun wrote that. A report has been submitted from an independent professional highways consultant to ensure the details of the access would be appropriate standards. Your highways officer agrees with this and poses no objection. Your historic environment officer says the proposed new vehicle access is an appropriate design for this rural location and will integrate successfully with the rest of the roadside fence line. It will have no impact on the special historical interest of the Grange registered park and garden. The committee members should note that two of the objections are from third parties who do not live in the local area. One from an address in Winchester and another from an address in London. Also duplicate objections have been lodged from shared households. The proposals meet the authorities' policies, there's no conflict with the principle of development, character, appearance of the area or heritage, biodiversity, neighbouring amenity, highways or flooding. As we already discussed with the planning officer, the conditions set will address points raised in some of the consultation commentary, including materials to be used in drainage. And just to address the councillor's point, that roadside verge is actually highways land. So it's to the highways to enforce the keeping it clear actually. And when we put the application in, we of course had to submit a notice to highways. So they're very well aware of the proposal and they obviously, the country council always didn't raise any objections to the proposal. So I think that's really all I have to say. So thank you very much for considering this today.
Thank you very much. There were two questions actually, I wonder if I could, the further question of clarification. I think that councillor Power was concerned about the height of the hedge, which might get in the way of the civilisation.
The problem is, it's undergrowth, it's vegetation.
It's vegetation underneath tree. And vegetation underneath trees, which may well be on, is that on the highway verge? Is that what you're saying?
The highway verge is typically a verge with kind of ivy and various self seeding kind of shrubs, if you will. And it's mostly clear actually, I think you can see from the picture that Sean brought to the table, that you can see clearly, you see the fence to the south. To the north, there is a tree line behind the fence, so you can see the kind of ivy on the bank there. But there's nothing very high end. None of the ground needs to be altered of course either. So it's literally just keeping down any self seeding new growth that might occur.
Okay. And the other question was, would you be happy to have the access restricted to agricultural vehicles? I know that we've got a condition. Shaun Moss at any time provides vehicular access to 101 Grange Park, but it doesn't restrict the type of vehicles. But councillor Power was concerned to restrict the type of vehicles.
So the only query I have there is if the groundsman came in in his estate wagon, you know, what is an agricultural vehicle? I suppose it's defining that really a pickup truck is an agricultural vehicle, small. Toyota, it's kind of a car really, but.
Okay, thank you. That's fine. I think that condition covers the query anyway. Thank you very much. Any other questions of clarification members for Mr Scott Masca? No? Okay, thank you very much. If you could switch your microphone off, that would be great. Okay, we now go back to Sean. Do you want to add anything to your report Sean, after that?
I think all the points have been covered chair.
Thank you very much, okay. We now move to questions, questions of our officer on his report members. And we will take the power pause. Councillor Pearce.
Yeah, concerned about Pearce being an anomaly Sean. Page one nine four, the penultimate paragraph, you say that service access, so that can be used more effectively for a particular agricultural usage. Fascinated by the word particular, but what puzzles me is on page one nine five, on the third paragraph, gentlemen, you say it is understood this vehicle access would not be appropriate for large agriculture machinery to traverse. Are we talking about two completely different things? So is it appropriate for agricultural machinery? What on earth is the bigger wider gate? What sort of machinery is going to go through here?
Thank you. As I understand it, the point is that the, the access through the dwelling is not suitable for, say, a tractor towing, mowing machinery. And I think that's the purpose, essential purpose of the gate, is to allow access for the maintenance of that field. So I had in my, I had in my mind a tractor with, with a mowing machinery behind it, which would access the new gate, and it's not appropriate to take that through the fronts of the house and out the back.
I guess that Sean, that would begin to explain one of the photographs. It looks like an orchard, no one presumes, if you're putting a void machine through there, standard gate would do. Turning would be difficult off on the way. But clearly if it is an orchard, that undergrowth needs to be cut back. Am I correct in summarising that?
Yes you are.
Any further questions for Sean? Of his report? No? Debate. Any debate? Councillor Reed.
Thank you chairman. Listening to the report makes a lot of sense, identifying the true location of the access is good. The only worrying part is, and I understand councillor Power's concern, is the fact that this new access is going to be right on the boundary. So anything that happens across the boundary is actually up to somebody else to try and put right. I think that's now being identified as Hampshire County council will have to do their job properly this time. I can see no, I can see no reason for approving this application.
Any more debate? No?
What you said.
What you said. All right, thank you members. So this application is recommended for approval. Can I see all those members in favour?
That's unanimous, yes.
So that application is approved. Thank you very much everybody. A record time to finish, well done everybody. Could I just take this opportunity to wish you all a very happy Christmas. And a perfect new year, and we will see you all in January.